I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, do we have any additions, deletions, or anything to the agenda? You know, okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Some other.
Sandra, second.
I'll say it.
All right, Jeff, any more discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here in the council comments?
What do you got there for council comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just take a minute. Yesterday Laura and I got to attend the grand opening for the Veterans Healing Farm on Jersey Road. We're very impressed and very grateful to have them in Mills River for what they do. Their goal is to end veterans' suicide. And they give an opportunity for people to be engaged and have some healing. So, just very impressed with them. Glad to have them.
And that's located upon Kimble River, about halfway through or almost at the other end, correct?
Almost, yeah.
Okay. Is that open to the public or is it invitation only or how does that, or do we know how that works for sure?
I, I think if you get in touch with them, they'd be glad to show you around. And of course, they don't need, wouldn't really want to interfere with any programs they got going. But, I mean, even they have a telehealth room where a veteran could go in and access telehealth if they may not have the phone line where they're at or their cell phone's body or whatever. They can get there and consult with a doctor and then there are things for them to do and just, you know, made welcome.
Awesome. Okay. Anything else? Council comments? Here and now. Uh, major updates?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief here. So, right now, there's a lot of stuff going on with water. So, a couple of different updates for you and for our residents. So, tomorrow, the park itself is going to be experiencing some water outages as we try to identify water leaks. So, we were told by Hendersonville Water, there was a water leak on property. Staff's been working diligently over the last week to try to identify what that location is. And so, we're going to start that exploratory phase tomorrow to try to find out and hopefully work to repair it. But because of that, there's going to be disruption in the, in the park area itself. It will not affect Town Hall and it will not affect the library, but we're going to have porta johns and porta potties out available for those that are going to be in the area tomorrow. So, just be aware of that, that, you know, we're going to make sure that people are informed as much as possible. There's a separate water item as well that's going to be affecting us going on into Saturday. So, as council may remember and our residents as well, this area on Haywood Road, there was a Hendersonville, water was doing a planned water outage the other week as well to try to repair some damage to one of their pipes. And so, they did a temporary fix, but they need to come back and actually finish the permanent fix, which means all water to this location as well as other locations that are a part of the water outage. And if you are in the water outage, you should have received a notification about it. The, well, will be affecting us on Saturday. So, there will be no water on this property, at the park property, including the library and including Town Hall. Again, we're going to have porta potties and other things that are available for the public to be able to use, but just be mindful of that. We're going to continue to make sure that the public is aware of any, any updates as we can through our social media, through our website, et cetera. So, if you have any questions, feel free just to go to those sites and that will make sure we'll give you the most up-to-date information that we can. The, the next thing around budget, just as a heads up to everyone, the budget kickoff actually is tomorrow with our staff. So, we're kicking off with our staff version of budget, the budget kickoff tomorrow, then council is next Thursday. So, again, we're getting into the fun phase of planning for FY26 in the future. And so, there's going to be more information once we publish the timelines and the agendas for the public to come out and provide their input and their information throughout the process, especially as we get closer into finalizing what that budget's going to look like. So, I recommend that our public continues to look and see those opportunities as they come up. Last, but certainly not least, today is Sue Powell's last day, all right, tomorrow is Sue Powell's last day with the, with the town of Mills River. This is her last council meeting. And so, and so, I just want to thank Sue for all of her incredible, great, incredible work for, for us and the town, for the town of Mills River. She was our first employee with the town and has stuck with us ever since. And I just want to share my gratitude to her for all that she has done for us. And I also just want to mention with that note as well, I do have an update because with transitions that we have, you know, we have to make sure that we continue to, you know, run government and make sure that we're as efficient and effective as possible. And so, we're actually onboarding two new members to the town of Mills River staff soon. One will be coming in next week as our new admin assistant. I'll provide that information to council when I can. And then, we also officially, or we will have a new finance director starting the third week of March. For purposes, right now, they, both of them come with a lot of experience and I'm really excited. I think they're going to be a great fit for the organization. But because of their current positions, I want to make sure that they have time to talk to their, to their staffs before I make it public. But just that to be said, we're very excited to have two, two new members of the team joining us soon.
Okay.
So, that's all I have. Oh, I'm so sorry. I do have one other item. I apologize. And Mike was about to throw something at me in the back of the room if I didn't do this. So, obviously, tonight during the business meeting, you all are going to be getting an update from our friends at Code Write on the UDO process. And one of the items that we've been doing over the last couple of days are public forums. And so, I just want to, you know, remind the public that we have a website up called ImagineMillsRiver.com. Again, that's ImagineMillsRiver.com. It's a great website with all the information about what the process is for the UDO update, where you can yourself actually sign up for those updates. And so, that's not just an update for, you know, items that are coming forward, but any updates to the website, new updated public forums, other opportunities for the public to come out and provide their input. You can sign up on that front page, on that main page and be able to get all that information. I, I just want to make sure that we get that information out as much as humanly possible to our community to make sure that they have their input and, or throughout this process. So, with that, I am now done.
You're there. But before we go on to public comment, I'd like to recognize Sue Powell. My goodness, Sue. Been a long road, ain't it? But you held up your end of the bargain with me. I'll tell everybody right here in public. When I got ready to possibly do the mayor deal, I'd already been elected as a councilperson, but I was getting a little bit of stimulation from other council members that was going to be on board to possibly fill that seat. And so, I come to Sue, first person I come to. We had managers, we had everybody, but I come to Sue. I said, Sue, I'd try this if you'd promised me two years, because I had no idea when she was going to leave. I didn't. I said, I just would feel more comfortable knowing that I could come to you and you'd help me get through some of these things, like reading proclamations, by the way. But just so you know, they asked me to read a proclamation. Yeah, they did, but they didn't though. But see, you would have knew that, right? You would have knew that, yeah. So, me and Sue's been around each other for going on 20 years. I've been on council for 15 plus and that four years, we didn't lose track of each other in that four years. So, in saying that, I think Santa Claus has left something under here for you. And this, you can imagine where this come from, but I will say that Sandra made sure she got us these for you. And I think Brian stopped by and got something too. And whether there's somebody got something behind you. Oh, so, everybody come on. Let's get it. Everybody come on. This is worthy of a good picture. Come on, come on. Yeah, I got two, three pictures. You have these, I'm funny, hold on.
They're for all of us.
Love you.
I love you too.
Everybody like, like Kishney, cousin?
Hope he's wrapping up my.
I might need to borrow one. Look, Malachi's dreading his day. He said, I hope, I hope Gans is gone. Here, so, and, you know, let's see what's on this box. Pretty sure I know, but let's make sure. Oh, yeah.
I'll be honest.
Yes.
When we did one for Orley.
Uh-huh. Yeah. It's awesome. Hey, give me a hug.
Thank you.
Well, appreciate you being there. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's a good thing about. Yeah, that's a good thing about this deal here. I mean, we just still live close to each other.
That's right.
Yeah. We'll get to get a talk, Mark, and listen. It's the truth. He knows it. Ain't said it right. All right. Yeah, I don't know, Sue. It, it only goes one way. Good luck.
I'll say for the record.
Oh, you gotta help her.
I'll say for the record, my mother loved Sue Powell.
Who'd know?
Absolutely did. She expressed it with breads. Soured over.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes people say, you know, you have a well deserved retirement. And I think Sue Powell embodies, you know, the fact that this is a well deserved retirement.
Absolutely.
You know, thank you, Sue.
All right, we'll get on the business as usual here. Uh, public comment, I've got two signed up. Uh, Riley Oats. There you go. You can stand right there. I think that one is, yeah, yeah. There you go.
My name is Riley Oats. I work with the United States Small Business Administration in the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resiliency. I just wanted to come by to go over the program that we offer. Um, we have, we, we provide disaster recovery loans. Um, we cover homeowners, renters, small businesses, non-for-profits. Um, the deadline for physical damages has been extended as of today to April twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. For economic injuries, it's June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Our physical loan, our physical damage loans for homeowners are up to $500,000. Covers any kind of real estate damage from Helene, uh, you know, wind, trees. You can get the loans before your insurance settles. Um, our business loans cover up to $2 million. And for physical damages, we can cover real estate, equipment, machinery, supplies, inventory. We also have economic injury loans for businesses and non-for-profits. That's to cover working capital. So, you know, keeping your employees all on the payroll, keeping the lights on, making sure you have the supplies that you need. Our rates are as low as 2.8% for homeowners, 4% for businesses, three and a quarter for non-for-profits. It is up to thirty years maximum term. For the first twelve months, there's no payments and there's no accrual of interest. Pardon me. You cannot use our loans for secondary homes. However, they are available for vacation rentals if you are actively using it as a business. We cover refinancing. If you had over forty percent of your real estate damaged or fifty percent of your home value, uh, we can cover refinancing your mortgage. We also have loans for people to relocate if they decide that they can no longer make it. Um, I just ask that people share this message with the rest of the community to make sure that, you know, we get this out to everybody who is paying into it. Thank you for your time.
Riley, could you just answer any questions? Uh, one I would have that I'm sure I will get asked is what is a turnaround?
About a month. If everything goes, goes smoothly, about a month.
Okay.
Um, right now, the issue that we're running up against is we have a lot of people in withdrawal status, which is, you know, maybe three months ago, you put in your application, you didn't hear anything. Maybe they tried to contact you. A lot of people, they get contacted by the SBA, we ask for your social security number, something. They hang up the phone, you know? Um, if you go into a center, follow up on your application, if you haven't heard back. Uh, a lot of people who get withdrawn, that's neither accepted nor declined. It's just they're missing some kind of information. And before we can process the loan, we need that information. Um, so I really encourage people to, you know, if you did apply, follow up.
Okay.
And I, uh, provided, Patty Brown over there, um, with all the information on our program. There is a customer support number, so people don't have to go into a physical location. But I always recommend that, you know, you go into the debt, uh, the disaster recovery center. That's at two one 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 Asheville Highway. Um, there's customer service representatives there. They're trained to, you know, help you process your application and they can go over our program with you as well.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Riley while he's up?
And if anybody has any questions, I'll be around till the end of the meeting. Thank you.
I, I would just, uh, briefly add as well that, that, um, Riley talked about the disaster recovery center. That's the location within Hendersonville. And the hour, and so Monday through Friday, that's open from eight AM to six PM. And Saturday from nine AM to two PM is closed on Sundays. So there are, uh, weekend hours available.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Oh, Jenny Sealy.
Hey, y'all.
Hey.
Jenny Sealy, ninety-four Clarice Trail. It's like I live here these days. Um, actually I wanted to talk about the National Park, uh, Service with the cuts that's being made with them. Um, and see what our town could do if that is maybe find some budget room to make internships for them while the federal government sorts whatever they're doing. Um, you know, we do have, uh, the NPS right across the road. We've got one in Transylvania County, um, and our surrounding counties. These people who live here, work here. Um, I'd like to keep them here. They're highly educated. Um, they know what they're talking about. So if, if there's any assistance that we could do as a town, um, even if it's a ten ninety-nine job or just some, you know, even if it's help landscaping, you know, over, you know, the course of the summer or whatever, to keep them here, keep them employed until they can go back to the national park system. I think that would a good, would be a good way for us to uplift our community, um, and, uh, keep some really high, highly educated folks in the area as well. So appreciate it.
Right.
If you entertain the idea.
Thank you. Right. Anybody else for public comment? Here none? Okay, moving on. Approval of the consent agenda? My motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank Brian. Thank Jeff. Jeff's second. Uh, any more discussion on this consent agenda? Here none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Here none. All right, regurgind, uh, proclamation of staff appreciation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, before you, as a proclamation, and if it, uh, is the will of council, I will read this proclamation of staff appreciation.
Sure.
As a proclamation by the town council of the town of Mills River, expressing gratitude to town employees for their hard work and dedication in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. Whereas Hurricane Helene caused significant damage and disruption to the town of Mills River, requiring extensive response and recovery efforts. And whereas the town, I'm sorry, when whereas the employees of the town of Mills River demonstrated exceptional dedication, resilience and commitment to the community by working tirelessly after the storm to clean up park facilities and support a resource hub that provided essential goods and amenities to community members. And whereas the town employees from all departments played a crucial role in restoring public spaces and ensuring residents had access to necessary supplies, often working extended hours under challenging conditions. And whereas approximately fifteen thousand people benefited from the hard work of our staff, volunteers and county personnel in the immediate aftermath of Hurricane Helene at the resource hub. And whereas the Mills River Town Council recognizes and deeply appreciates the extraordinary efforts of town employees and wish to acknowledge their hard work and dedication in a meaningful manner. And whereas the Mills River Town Council desires to honor all employees who were employed with the town during the cleanup and recovery efforts and recognition of their service and commitment to the residents of the town of Mills River during the response and recovery from Hurricane Helene. Now therefore be proclaimed that we, the Town Council of the Town of Mills River, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim our deepest gratitude and appreciation to all town employees who dedicated their time, energy and resources during and in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. Your efforts have and will continue to make a profound impact in the lives of our community members. The Town Council honors and celebrates these remarkable individuals who, whose teamwork and actions remind us that we can overcome any challenge together. In witness whereof, I, Shannon Gantz, the, the mayor of the Town of Mills River, hereunto set my hand and cause the official, uh, cause the official seal of the Town of Mills River to be affixed this twenty-seventh day of February, twenty twenty-five. So by proclamation, um, again, um, and I'm going to look at the, uh, the, the town clerk here. By proclamation, coun- council may adopt this to move forward. I know the council has, uh, shown their willingness to move forward with this proclamation. And so I've read it on, on behalf of the town council. But I turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, y'all. Happy with this? Very well written. You know, I don't know if we could ever write down how much we really appreciated everybody and all the hard work they did and made themselves available to us during this awesome, awful thing we had to go through as a community and watch others around us that even had it worse. I feel like we was on the edge. We was an oasis. So we was able to supply pretty quickly. So I'm happy for that. And that being said, I'd entertain a motion to approve this proclamation. And feel free to say, what are you going to say before?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation. Uh, so dependent that staff stands for a second.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Here none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Here none? Okay.
Moving on, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, let me get back there while I'm out. So going on to be, uh, approval of the one-time appreciation bonus for staff.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, before you, again, with, with speaking with you in conjunction with the proclamation the town council has so graciously approved and signed off on, is the, uh, opportunity to, uh, show a one-time appreciation bonus, uh, for the staff. And again, speaking with council, I know that this is a direction that in general that you all have wanted to explore. And I appreciate your willingness to have this conversation. Uh, and so what, what's before you is a, a one-time bonus for all full-time, non-contract staff. Uh, specifically, uh, for one, uh, with a $1,000 bonus and a $500 bonus for all permanent part-time staff. As you can see under the fiscal impact, the breakdown of that, which would be approximately $12,500, it'd be coming from our fund balance. But again, uh, we, we do have that, uh, ability within our budget.
Okay. Uh, discussion, questions?
I think that we should include the new town manager in that as he came into a hurricane.
Yep.
And he, he did an outstanding job. He pulled things together. He was a great resource and he reached out between us and the county and kept things going and kept town hall organized.
Yep. There you go. Anyone else?
I agree. So we, whoever makes the motion, make it with that amendment.
I'm sure you're okay with that.
Um, I, I would just briefly say thank you so much for those kind words. I greatly appreciate it. Yeah, it's a full, it truly was a team effort.
It was.
It was a great team.
Thank you for your leadership and recommending this. I'm very impressed with that.
Okay. So with that said, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve this with the addition.
So I move that town council authorize the town manager to provide a one-time appreciation bonus in the amount of $1,000 for all full-time staff and $500 for permanent part-time staff with the inclusion of a fi- or a $1,000 bonus as well for the town manager.
All right, you got a first. How about a second?
I'll second it.
Sandra's second. Any more discussion? Here none? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Welcome, more than welcome. We're glad we had it to give to you. Y'all very much deserve that.
Absolutely.
Okay, when we run along HR assessment, presentation and consideration.
I, I'm going to be walking up there as well, but Peggy, if you would like to. So, uh, as a, uh, I will actually give the presentation up there. Sorry, give me one second.
Thank you, Rob and Craft HR Solutions. Really delighted to be here. So thank you for allowing me that opportunity.
I'm just going to give a quick little background on, on, uh, why Peggy's here. Uh, so Peggy is a senior consultant for Craft HR. And as a reminder, council during the twenty twenty-five budget season, uh, approved, uh, the hiring of a, an HR firm to help us with payroll, uh, payroll type duties. And so one of the elements that Craft HR provided as a part of their contract is an HR assessment. So, and, and, and general best practices, you know, before you go in and start jumping into any type of practice, you need to understand, you know, what the, what the foundation is. And so today before you is actually, uh, Peggy's here to talk through what that HR assessment looks like. And then following that, uh, I'm going to provide some recommendations for council to consider, uh, specifically regarding our personnel policy. And, and as another reminder, uh, at least from my understanding, uh, council during the budget season last year had a, had conversations and have had conversations over the years about potential personnel policy updates. And this is one of those first steps, again, leaning on the expertise of our, um, of Craft HR as an outside entity to come in and help guide us through that process to make sure that we're not misstepping along the way. So with that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll, you have fourteen slides before you and a lot of times people yawn and say, oh, my gosh, not a PowerPoint death here. So I will not be going through each detail of this, but just to give you an idea of the process. We, um, we come in and, and meet with the town manager and talk to folks and kind of get a feel for, for what's happening and sort of discovery opportunity, if you will. And then we collect data, um, as needed. And we, we sort of try to identify some gaps between, um, what's happening today and what the potential, um, opportunities are for the future. And then we develop recommendations. And from there we take action based on the client, in this case, the, the town, um, wants to do and with regard to moving forward. So just from a high level executive summary, we look at foundational things first. So policies, performance, um, evaluations, training opportunities, benefit opportunities, things like that. How to optimize tools and technology. And then the second phase is generally kind of refining some of the things that we put in place. And again, in partnership with the town, um, that are foundational and refine some things that are happening, make changes to things that we've recommended and so forth. And then we talk if the, if the client and again, the town is willing or interested, we talk about the future state and whether, what are other opportunities that exist, um, and as it relates to the HR function. So some of the, the, we'll go into a little more detail about some of this, but per- performance and development. Um, some of the things that, that we recognize were, of course, a handbook, just revising the handbook, which hasn't been revised in quite some time. And updating job descriptions similarly hasn't really been revised in, for myriad of reasons in, in a while. Um, training managers and development, development of performance management systems and kind of looking at the benefit package and what are their potential offerings. Um, educating employees on their benefits, making sure people understand the full, uh, the full array of benefits that they have and how they can best utilize that. And then identify if there are opportunities to digitize files. Again, this is all, you know, moving forward, just opportunities that exist. Um, areas that we recognize in terms of strength, just really people focused. Um, you put people as a priority here and recognize that, um, the way we treat our employees is the way they treat our residents. And it kind of trickles down and we appreciate that you, that you treat your people so, so favorably. Um, regular meetings, it, you know, there's plenty of opportunities for employees to learn about what's going on in the town. And there's lots of meetings and engagement and those are all healthy, good, healthy signs of a good, healthy organization. Very community focused, um, responsible growth, community preservation, and you can see the list there. And I'm excited and Craft HR is excited to be a part of working with town, with the town and particularly with your town manager and the staff to look at these opportunities and assist with any initiatives that, that you might be interested in. And I'm excited and Craft HR is excited to be a part of working with town, with the town and particularly with your town manager and the staff to look at these opportunities and assist with any initiatives that, that you might be interested in. A couple of things you said are underway, the, the payroll process, of course, in partnership with your staff and your town manager have transitioned to the, to the bi-weekly payroll schedule. And then existing some things that we'll begin to work on at the, within the timeline that the town manager defines is revising that employee handbook and looking at best practices for foundational opportunities moving forward. High potential things have to do with, and we've talked a little bit about this, the handbook, but consistent application of policies and processes. And this is, you'll hear later from the town manager or maybe now about some of the things, just trying to make sure that, that the policies that you have are update, updated and that they're applied consistently throughout the organization. And he's really kind of taken the bull by the horn to try to, to get that underway. And then, did you want to add anything on that at this time?
Thank you.
Keep going, okay. And then again, performance management, how do we set goals for employees and help employees know that what they do aligns with the vision that the council has set and the, the future planning, you know, what, how does what I do matter in terms of you meeting your goals and expert, and expectations for the town? And then how do we coach and correct employees when they, when they get a little bit off course? How do we get them back on course and coach them to success? So those are some of the things. And then I talked earlier about benefits. You know, do we want to consider a survey to kind of get a sense from employees as you grow? What are employees' benefits that they value most? And are there things that, that employees wish we had more of and what are those? And is there, is there an opportunity to add or enhance benefits in that regard?
I will jump in at that. Okay, and just to, just to put a finer point on, as you can see, what we're talking, those areas there are following the establishment of the foundational policy update. So, and what we mean by that is really around the, the personnel policy, the, the employee handbook. By, by setting that foundation and then be creating that standardization across and so that not only are our, our policies up to date, but then our policies and our practices will also be in alignment, right? Across, you know, across the staff. Then we are able to move into these next phases, which I personally am very excited about the ability to say, okay, then how can we continue to improve? How do we continue to then, you know, measure what success looks like and be able to be nimble based off of, you know, market trends or, you know, staffing trends, et cetera? But we have to start here first, and that's actually why we're going to be talking about the personnel policy in phases moving forward is to try to get that into a place where then going into FY '26, we can start talking about potentially these types of elements as well. Because they're very much, they're very much an area of focus. I mean, it says areas of focus up there, but as your town manager, they are truly an area of focus for us to make sure that we're keeping a pulse on, on, on how we can continue to improve and move forward.
Yeah. And again, following the foundational policy and the foundational pieces being in place, looking at, as I mentioned earlier, ways to, to digitize files and, and do employee engagement surveys and things like that as we move forward. How do we bring people into the organization? And as you grow, you know, what are those positions that you're going to be looking for? How do we make the town as attractive as possible to, to obtain those high-quality and high-potential employees moving forward? And then some other areas, again, that the onboarding, you know, where are we advertising? How do we get the message out when, when those positions are available and that work is needed? And then the HR strategy, again, it's that identifying performance indicators as your town manager referenced. How do we align all of these things so that employees are aware of the expectations their supervisor has on, for their work and how that work is aligned to the overall mission of the town?
Now, just echo, obviously, we're going through our strategic planning process right now. And so we've been talking about the performance management phase of that, that, once we establish a strategic plan, then there's the performance management. And here was another good indicator when Peggy and I were going through this, talking about how key performance indicators are going to play into that. So we're actually seeing both in the, in the HR side because we think it's a best practice and it's absolutely vital for understanding what's going on. But it's also going to be rolled into the larger performance management conversation that we're going to have as part of the strategic planning process.
And you can see in here also conducting exit interviews with employees when they do leave. I think that's something you could think about if you're not already doing that and perhaps you are. And also more and more organizations today are doing stay interviews. We're talking to, to employees like Sue, what keep, what keeps you here? You know, what is it that, that gets you up in the morning and gets you excited about coming to work for the town so that we can do more of those kinds of things and less of the things that, that may encourage people to say, I'm not sure this is the best fit for me. So again, those are things, you know, again, moving forward after the foundational pieces are in place. And then there's some other pages and I don't need to go into detail about this, but just as you are growing, you know, making sure that your managers and supervisors who are conducting the interviews have good strategies and good skills and tools for getting the right people to come to work here and, and conducting those interviews in a way that helps the candidate know what, what the job is and what they can expect, but also helps the supervisor know whether or not those are the right candidates for you moving forward. So some training around those kinds of things are always beneficial. Most organizations can get better at that even when they're really, really good. Just making sure they have the right, the right folks in the work. And then culture and strategy, again, it's, you know, moving forward beyond the foundational pieces, opportunities to, to, to hear from employees about what they love about working for the town and what things they wish the town would do more of or less of. So engagement surveys and, and things like that, or some other best practices that you could consider moving forward. Programs, you know, allowing volunteer programs and, and things like that, moving forward with employees to get involved with the community, which again, you may already have some of that, but just looking at ways to, to, to demonstrate to the community how much you care about the things that are going on there and how, and employees having the opportunity to participate. And again, this is beyond, this is more into the future, but other things that, that are important is to keep and, keep your, your hand on the pulse as it relates to benchmarking with, with best practices, making sure your compensation is competitive and those kinds of things on an ongoing basis. Making sure your benefits are, are the best in order to attract the best talent to your organization and so forth. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to your town manager to talk more specifically about some things, unless you all have questions and happy to answer any questions.
Who would orchestrate and carry out those like employee engagement interviews?
Well, the surveys we off, the Craft HR Solutions does offer us an employee survey. It's an instrument that's used through a, a Survey Monkey application. It comes to HR, to Craft HR. And we work with the town manager and others to, to determine what it is you're looking for, that you want to know about. And the questions are, are crafted in such a way to kind of get to some of those issues. And then we provide the results. We don't ask for the names of the employees, just the positions that they're in and how long they've been there, just some demographics so that then you can slice it and dice it to, to find out, you know, are there certain areas of work where people have more fun or enjoy the work more or stay longer or there, or more areas where, certain areas where they leave with more frequency? And it allows you the opportunity to drill into that a little more. And I would, I would recommend that you consider that a little bit later, but that is something that Craft offers. Other people offer it also, other organizations. And we build the instrument and get the results so that it, it is clear to employees that those results are coming to a third party and not directly to the town manager.
Well, that's what I was making sure of, you know, to get accurate. You're going to need it going to a third party and coming out.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say that, just speaking for myself here, that disaggregated data is absolutely vital. So regardless of, because obviously we're a smaller organization and, you know, only one person may be sitting in one role. So even disaggregating it even more to provide even more general type response where we could still act on it would be something that would be a focus of mine. Again, later on down the road, try to gather that information.
Okay.
And, and I'll just add that generally when these are done, you wouldn't, you would aggregate it. And if you break it down at all, you wouldn't break down an or, a part of the organization with fewer than 10 employees, for example, whatever that threshold is so that, so that you wouldn't be able to say, oh, I know that's Peggy Rowe because she's the only person who has that job. So in that scenario, those folks would be included in a larger group.
I misspoke when I said disaggregate, I meant de-identify. So thank you for that, Clay. Yeah, so we further de-identify the information to where there, there'd be less identificating, identification markers.
Got you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Back to you.
So, so I just want to thank Peggy again for coming out and for providing this and she, she and Craft HR have been a pleasure to work with. And as a reminder, we're actually using them right now for our payroll, for our assistance with payroll as well. And as Sue goes off to enjoy retirement as well, and as I put on the hat of interim finance director for you, they've been a pleasure to work with to make sure that we're not going to lose any of that trans, anything within the transition. And then when we bring the new finance director on, again, that transition back. So they're, they're going to continue to play a vital role. But before you, speaking to what Peggy is mentioning before, we took the information, they, they provided a lot of, of specific recommendations specifically for our employee handbook. I've been able to go through that, worked through what those updates look like, worked with Craft HR, worked with our attorney. And then also as a reminder, I stood up a policy committee of a few of our employees at various levels within the organization to try to get their feedback on this as well. So what's before you has been seen now through all of those segments. Right now, the introduction, just to orient you a little bit, the current policy that we have has the whereas statement, you know, the, the resolution that's a part of it's very formalized. And because it's an employee handbook, the introduction, we just moved that out, added a little welcome blurb, a little bit about the town for the new employees on the first page. And then going into Article One, I'm happy to go into any details or any questions that you all have, but Article One, dealing with general provisions, is actually a combination and an update of our current Articles One and Two. Article One currently is dealing with policy and that can go under general provisions. So we cleaned that up a little bit, updated some of the definitions just a little bit, added some elements, some sections in there that were, that may not have been quite clear or may needed to be updated just to, to law now. The legal requirements that before you, and really Article One is very legal-heavy in that regard about what the town has an expectation on and, and definitions, responsibilities, et cetera. So as I mentioned, there was, there were a couple of updates, there was a minor up, there was an update within the responsibility of the town council that was removed. That item specifically talked about that the town council could direct a staff member to do special projects by nature. That, that really, I don't, one, I don't know if that's ever been, that's ever happened, but that's a, in my understanding and experience, that's a mayor, that's in more of a mayor council form of government. So now that we have a council manager form of government, removing that, so it's not, well, one council member can go and direct a staff to do a special project. It's obviously the design of our organization. So I updated that piece and then, like I said, general updates across, and then we added employee classification. So again, in this section here, we clearly defined what employee classifications are between exempt, non-exempt, part-time, internships, if we have them, temporary employees, et cetera. That's Article One. Before we move on to Article Three, I just wanted to see if there are any questions that you all had when reviewing this document.
I didn't have any. Anybody? No.
Edwell?
Okay.
Article Three deals specifically with recruitment and employment. And again, speaking to what Peggy was talking about before, we've known for a while that some of these elements needed to be updated. So one in particular was looking at our recruitment, selection and appointment, how we're going to be using sources for recruitment. As an example, our current policy states that we must publish it in a newspaper. Well, you know, depending on the job, it may not be the most applicable to put it into the newspaper, but this one actually expands our opportunities to say, hey, if it's, if it's in print media, if it's electronic media, what have you, we have the ability to make that determination of the best, best use for that. And then the, what you see in Section Three there says introductory period, that's a recommendation to change our term from probationary period to introductory period. One, it's a little bit more accurate. It's an introduction to the town, it's an introduction of the, the new member to us, right? But then, so that mostly that terminology change, there's a little bit of verbiage change that's in there as well. For the most part, transfers and promotion status changes, the demotions, those elements, again, cleaned up some of the language. There shouldn't be, in my opinion, there was nothing that was monumental to bring before you unless there was something that caught your eye that you thought we needed to have further discussion.
Don't see anything in that.
Before I ask for a motion to approve these, I just want to provide you with a brief understanding of how we, how I recommend we move forward with this. So as you can see right now, Article One and Article Three is before you, as because Article Two is, is the payroll policy update. We're still working through that. It's very meaty. And then there are other sections like holiday leave and bonuses and benefits, et cetera. So because of the way they all have different hits and there's going to be different impacts potentially based off of council's decision, this is the, this is the beginning of it and we're going to continue working through it. But I would, I would ask that council consider adopting these two documents effective date today, right? And that if there are any inconsistencies within the current version of the document, let's say later on in a section that we haven't gotten to yet, that this will supersede those elements. What I will recommend is as we work through this in phases, then at the very end, when there has been an adoption of all the, all the different articles, that I'll bring that to you as one final package so that you can review it, make sure there are no other questions, see it in its entirety and then make a final adoption of the full document itself. It's a little much to bring it all within one, within one meeting.
Any questions before we call for a motion?
A great question and my best public administration answer, it depends. What I can imagine is probably in the last meeting in March, I'll, I'll be bringing a couple of more sections to you. My, my belief is that if you were going to ask me right now, probably getting through April to May will be when everything is completed. There will be some sections that I bring to you that I'm going to ask for an effective date of July 1st, 2025, just to, just because, like I said, there are some moving parts in there and that's, so my goal is by July 1st, 2025, there will be a new personnel, an updated personnel policy for the town.
Is, is any of our staff getting to look over any of these changes as we go? Is that staff meeting stuff or how are you working through those changes other than just cleaning them up?
So right, so again, as a reminder, I, one of the first things that I did with coming into the town is setting up a policy committee. So there, on that policy committee, we have both salaried exempt employees, salaried non-exempt employees to, and, and also with a various level of supervision. So again, to try to make sure that we have it as clean of a, of a view as possible. Obviously, any kind of committee could be better, but I think, but I try to provide that wide breadth as much as possible. So they have, like I said, they will review this. That's why the timeline, it depends, because it depends on when I can get it for them, get their feedback, make sure that there are no legal issues and then bring it for council.
Sounds good. I entertain a motion to move this forward and make it effective. Do you need the language in there that you spoke of to make this supersede the others or?
I, I would ask if council would, would adopt that, yes. Yes, sir. And it should be, I believe it is in the language here under item C.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion, but before I do, grateful to the owners who gave me the opportunity to have a soapbox and a platform. And so since I've got a captive audience, I'll give you a few of my ideas about dealing with personnel. Our personnel are our greatest resource. Y'all, y'all have recognized that. So I hope as we move forward, we make sure we have plenty of opportunities for people to grow. Having been in a situation where I felt I no longer had a place to grow. Having been in a situation where I felt I no longer had a place to grow, working for a municipality, that caused me to want to be there anymore. So the opportunity to grow, make myself more valuable. And for us as a town to recognize as people become more valuable, we're more than. We went through a process in a previous employer where we had a personnel study. It's been hours and hours and hours. Had people gain pay rates but no money. Those people said goodbye to us. So my guiding thoughts are this is a great program. Let's go through it. I'm happy to support it. Let's just make sure that as we implement, allow our people to grow, to know that we value them, and then make sure that anything that's done, it's positive. So and that being said, I make the motion, the town council adopts the presented article of dates to the personnel policy, and that the newly adopted sections supersede any contradictory sections within the personnel policy.
All right, I got it first. How about a second?
I'll second.
Right. So here. Any more discussion? Hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none?
Thank you, council.
So back in, we're going to twenty twenty five, let's say, project discussion.
Move from one mic to the other.
There you go.
All right. So this is the better angle, the camera for me. So so it's a mayor and council. So I believe this will be a pretty informal discussion here, but recently I was contacted by some of our federal representatives. And as as a part of that, they reached out to ask if there were any legislative projects or or initiatives that the town of Mills River would be interested in in putting forward. And so it was actually a reminder to me as well, going into next year, that we'll have a legislative goals discussion, a little more formalized. But the question really was, are there any, is there anything from a council's perspective, from the council's perspective around, especially around infrastructure and emergency response that you all would like to direct me to reach out to our representatives to share for consideration at the federal level? Now, what I'll say is this list as well, again, based off council's direction, would be to to also then share that with our state representatives as well as they work through their budgetary processes.
Everybody go.
Well, I was going to say we need to see what we can do about the riverbank restoration, but we need cleanup from the reservoirs all the way down to the French Broad. And that's going to take partnerships with different groups and lots of money.
Understood. I have that note. Thank you, ma'am.
As we talked about yesterday, the Sky Regional Council Communications, redundancy, resiliency, because we all suffered. Most people found a place where they could get cell service, went there as often as they could. Like those places were few. Winton Park, right? So as we rebuild, something we can do.
James? Nothing. Brian?
I think for me, it's it's bridges and roadways that are prone to flooding. Is if maybe we could get some assistance on looking at elevating those to provide longer times of use versus, you know, you can get cut off real easy. So.
And make sure they're both two line bridges.
For me, nothing that they ever spoke of. So I'm good.
So I have before my notes say cleanup for for reservoirs, from the reservoirs to the French Broad, riverbank restoration, riverbank restoration projects and initiatives around them. Any type of emergency communication and redundancy, especially tools and, you know, whatever, whatever that actual that actual product or project looks like. And then bridges and roadways prone to flooding. And so that and I'm assuming we're talking about private roads and bridges that are prone to flooding. Or are you talking about?
Both.
Both.
This is going to state afterwards. Yes.
Okay.
Have we reached out to the fire department to find out if they have any specific needs?
I've for specifically for this? No, sir. I will tell you that I have been in and rather constant communication with the interim fire chief. And we ourselves have actually had conversations about how we can build emergency communications and redundancy between the town of Mills River and Mills River Fire Rescue, as well as with Henderson County Sheriff's Office, especially our deputies that are assigned out here during events. So that was going to be part of this list. It was one of my recommendations as well, but that's a long-winded way of me saying, no, not specifically around this.
Anything else? No. When you, when was I expecting this back to them?
I got an extension to tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I I I would tell you that the request was for the request, I believe, came in on Friday for a Monday turnaround. I said I need to bring it to council by on Thursday, and so they gave us to Monday, to Friday.
Okay. All right, moving on, other business. Anyone for other business? Hear none? I entertain a motion to adjourn our regular meeting and then a motion after that to go into our business meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn our regular meeting to go into the business meeting.
Second.
All right, Jeff second. Any discussion what we're doing? Hear none? All in favor?
Were they going to speak?
They will be as part of the business meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We take these off for the business meeting. Do y'all have, did y'all give the card to Sue? Did y'all give the card to Sue?
Okay, if everyone's ready, we'll move along with our business thing. We've got our UDO consultant to give us a presentation on where they are.
If I may, if I may, I'll just quickly mention again, they are you do UDO consultants are from Code Right. And they are Chad Meadows and Karen Mallow. And they and I'll let them introduce themselves a little bit more. I just want to say thank you all for coming out here. I know you've been spending a few days with us as well. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you so much. I'm Chad Meadows with Code Right, and with me is Karen Mallow. And it's our pleasure to be here. We've been here for the last few days. We've had an opportunity to meet with your wonderful community, spend three days in this room. So we like it. We actually, next time, we're going to bring Cots. We're just going to stay. So we have a short presentation for you tonight. I I sort of chuckled when the prior presenter said death by PowerPoint. We have fifteen slides, but we'll try to move through them very quickly and try to keep it interesting for you. And so we're here tonight to just give you an update on the Imagine Mills River project, talk with you a little bit about the code diagnosis, which is sort of the next deliverable in the in the sequence, and then talk about next steps. So if it's your pleasure, we'll go ahead and get started.
Sure.
Okay. Again, project background, what we've heard so far, a little bit of detail on the code diagnosis and the next steps. And obviously, if you guys have questions at any time, please feel free to stop us. Project goals, we've got seven of them. These are goals that are identified either in your adopted policy guidance or goals that you guys have specified for us in past conversations, or things that we've heard from the community. So protecting community character here in Mills River, obviously, number one priority, implementing your adopted policy guidance from Making Mills River, some of the other project documents that you guys have. Creating a user-friendly code. Your current regulations consist of eight chapters in your town code, two or three illustrations, very difficult to manage, difficult to read, over time have gotten somewhat inconsistent. So definitely due for an overhaul. In fact, this is, as you know, the first time that the town has really gone in and comprehensively reviewed and updated its development regulations. So that's really exciting to have a customized set of development regulations made for you, which is is not what you're working with right now. So it's a new day. And I think that you guys will be very pleased with with what comes back, at least from an operational standpoint. Much easier to use, much more illustrated, just definitely a lot more of an enjoyable experience, hopefully more predictable, easier to get through, et cetera. Some of the project goals, very, very important, obviously protecting the environment for so, so many reasons. I love to come here because it's just so beautiful. You guys truly live in, you're blessed to live in this beautiful place and making sure that that's protected is really, really important. Increasing housing options, not necessarily density necessarily, but more variety of housing styles, ways to allow people to age in place, create revenue streams, allow their children to come home after college. Just some more options, or at least the opportunity for some some wider variety of housing, understanding some of the other project goals, like protecting rural character, protecting the environment, et cetera. Promoting development quality, the development that that does come to Mills River should be of high quality. It should be beautiful. It should be functional. It should be safe. It should contribute to your tax base. It should do all of these things. And the UDO will help make sure that that happens. Modernizing, modernizing your uses, modernizing your procedures, bringing your development regulations into the 21st century. What you have now is about twenty, twenty-five years old. It's it's time for an update and just kind of bringing you guys into into the now with respect to this practice, with respect to legal sufficiency, et cetera. So those are project goals. And we'll be revisiting those every time we're before you, just to make sure that we're staying on target. Here is our work program. There's seven tasks to this work program. The project's going to take us about twenty months. We expect to be done in June of twenty-six. We'll be out seven times. This is our second trip out. We'll have four public forums, the first of which was conducted a couple of days ago. So that is the first of four. We have a project steering committee that we're working with members of your planning board and your board of adjustment. What a great group. And we had a very spirited meeting with them today. Good input, very smart people, very passionate about Mills River. So just a real pleasure to work with. We'll be in front of you guys numerous times over the arc of the project. We also have what we call office hours, an opportunity for anybody to come and speak with us during our trips here. We set aside half a day. Anybody can make an appointment and come and have some one-on-one time with us. We also are happy to go out and make presentations. Maybe it's HOAs or church groups or civic groups, whatever. We set aside some time because that's a real priority for us, making sure that people have an opportunity to get their questions answered. We've also done a variety of stakeholder interviews, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. So this is our work program. It's one that we've developed over years of doing this. We're not married to it, but we find it's a good starting point and sort of an outline as we go forward. Okay? The webpage has been drafted. It's prepared. It's out there, imaginemillsriver.com. Four or five tabs on the page, a homepage, a place to sign up as as manager mentioned. We also include a set of FAQs. There's a place at the bottom to ask a new question. If we get new questions posted to the webpage, my gosh, we'll add them to the FAQ list. So that's a very easy thing for us to do. All of your draft project material, the work products, et cetera, that'll all be there in documents. And there's another tab about how to participate in the program, what's coming up next and how to get involved. Okay, so we really do try to to make this an active, vibrant part of the project. Input to date, what have we heard so far? We've had twenty-eight signups on the on the webpage since we've launched it. In fact, I've had three while we've been here in the room. So that's fantastic. We're, we have projects all over the state. And I will say that the Mills River folks have been very active in signing up for the webpage. So that we're very happy about that, that that there seems to be great interest in the part of the community. So that's good. I mentioned those nine stakeholder interviews. So back in November, we conducted a series of interviews with stakeholders identified by staff. There's a summary report that's been prepared, and that details some of the things that we've heard. And I'm going to talk more about that in a second. Also, this open house that we just conducted on Tuesday night and Wednesday over the course of the day. So let me talk a little bit about what we've heard from the stakeholder. So again, nine folks, nine stakeholders, blend, blend of residents, business owners, farmers, technical professionals. You know, we noticed some similarities and some commonalities in the information that we were hearing, like a desire to protect community character, very much what we've heard with from you guys. Agreement that housing in Mills River, for all of our efforts and all of our desires, it's simply not affordable. There are some differences of opinion about density. How much is too much? Where should it be? We're still exploring those questions with the community and would expect to continue to do so as we go forward. So far, we've heard a bit of a dislike about multifamily uses. Not surprising. Certainly, something we'll explore. Density and particular use types, those are important concepts, but they're also constructs. One of the things that we know is that how how a development looks, how well it integrates with its environment, can have a lot of impact on how people feel about it. If it if it melds into the landscape, if it's a beautiful facility, if it sits well with its others. It's it's less less damaging. People have less concern about it. So we want, we look forward to talking more about design. And how do we promote compatibility? How do we try to integrate these kinds of uses that are important to the community and do it in ways that protect rural character, protect the environment, and promote, you know, property values? We need more discussion about non-residential. Lots of folks in the community would like more services. They would like more retail offerings. Where should those go? And how should those be configured are questions that we're still exploring. We know there's a strong desire for public participation. That's been expressed to us many, many times, and it's something that we are taking to heart. These projects can be something of a challenge when it comes to public participation. This is not edge-of-the-seat stuff. It can be maybe a little boring sometimes and also difficult to understand, difficult to to reach. People care about their property. People care about what's going on with their land or what's going on next door. When we start talking about development review procedures or flexibility or incentives, people, people's eyes have a tendency to glaze over. It's understandable. And so, you know, we 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 work hard to make sure that that people do have a chance to participate. We put the trough there. We beg the horses to come. Your staff is is is, you know, dedicated to making sure that we we get public participation. We're dedicated to that. So we're coming to the table and we're bringing our best effort and we're encouraging the community. We're dedicated to that. So we're coming to the table and we're bringing our best effort and we're encouraging the community to do so as well. Public forum. So we had a public forum on Tuesday night from 5:00 to 7:00. We followed that up with sort of a drop-in here in this room on Wednesday from 12:00 to 5:00. We had 21 visitors. Staff is in a better position to explain the amount of advertising and the things that were done. I believe they followed all the channels and all of the opportunities that they had available to them to to promulgate this information. We'll continue to work with that and and find ways to refine our approach and get better. We had about six boards with exercises. So there were a variety of different materials for people to read and interact with. Questions like what should the U D O address? What are your ideas about appropriate housing types? What about, you know, what's your support for rural residential? The opportunities for people to just kind of weigh in with sticky notes or with dots. We were here to talk to people. We got a lot of great information from the people who who came and spoke with us. We'll provide some detailed information on what we heard in the final version of this, the code diagnosis. But I will ask Karen to to talk a little bit more about some of the things that we've heard during the public forum.
So again, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. It's a pleasure to speak to you. One of the things that we did during the public forum was that as people walked in, we tried to greet them and really just kind of introduce the project to them. We set up, as we, as Chad said, 10 different stations where people could come in and interact. And we asked for the input. A lot of, you'll see the sticky notes or dots put on maps and things like that. So one of the things that we heard first and foremost, and again, you're seeing this through pretty much everything we have. These are not only in our code diagnosis, but they are the overall goals of the project is preserve that rural character and open space. There was not one comment made. There were one person that did not come in and sort of make that comment. We did hear that loud and clear. Number two is that it's controlled growth in appropriate areas. So again, and Chad spoke to this, you know, sort of seeing some non-residential uses, seeing some maybe of those higher density. And, you know, I know that D word can be a bad thing, but putting them in the appropriate areas where utilities are available, where across roads, where there's transportation and ease of access to it. And then putting, you know, the other less impactful development in the more rural areas, if at all. Three, we talked about a variety of housing choices. Again, Chad just mentioned that. But again, they, the talk of density hasn't really been explored, but we did want to talk about those housing choices. And one of the things that came up, you can see on number four on that slide, is that people had to put the dots where they thought appropriate housing, you know, what was good. And ADUs, accessory dwelling units, was by far the most popular. And again, those can come in a variety of options. Those can be detached units. They can be, you know, a basement apartment. You know, we refer to them as in-law suites maybe back in the day, but those provide, again, an income resource if you were to use them as VRBO or, you know, a short-term rental. They provide aging in place for parents or children coming back from college. They just provide a lot of opportunities. And as you can see, that was obviously well-received. So that was encouraging for us to hear. And then pockets of higher density. We, a couple of people mentioned this, that they're okay with the higher density, but maybe not a massive complex. Maybe, you know, four, five, six townhomes together in one area. And we typically see that as infill, you know, in smaller neighborhoods where, you know, or along a street, rather than what we're seeing in Mills River being the farms that get redeveloped. And that's when those massive complexes come in because we have large amounts of acreage. So seeing those pockets of higher density rather than spreading that out. And Chad uses an expression of spreading it out or sprinkling it. And obviously sprinkling it seemed a little bit more manageable. For the other things that we heard were not the non-residential, again, those uses to fit the community. What do those look like? Are they going to be modern? Are they going to have sort of an agricultural use to the, or a look to them? Are they going to be in appropriate areas in the town and serving those sort of pockets or nodes? As we would see where they fit into the community. And then last but not least, ensuring that there's adequate infrastructure. So again, placing the, those types of uses where the infrastructure meets the needs for those. And preserving, you know, the southern part of town where there aren't utilities and then putting those where, you know, putting the density or the improvements where the infrastructure exists currently.
Just wanted to give you a little bit of the flavor. This is 21 people. This is only the beginning. We have many, many more to hear from. And we, and we understand that there are many more who have things to say. And so we look forward to continuing the discussion as as we move along. But it is heartening to hear that there is some agreement with respect to, you know, protection of community character, with respect to, hey, we understand that there is, you know, some, some housing challenge here. It's too expensive. And how do we address that? Protect farming, you know, protect the rural heritage that we have. We get that. And so we are hearing some consistent statements from the community. That's helpful. And again, more things to talk about. Talk a little bit about the code diagnosis. This, that's this document, which is currently in draft form that we're working on with your staff. It's the roadmap for the new U D O. It explores the differences between your adopted policy guidance, Making Mills River, and the future that it envisions for Mills River versus your current regulations. What will be wrought from your current standards? How far out of alignment are those two documents? Turns out they're fairly far out of alignment, and that needs to be addressed. So this document talks about that and considers where are the areas where there's inconsistency between what we said we'd like to have and what our regulations are resulting in. This document gives us a framework to enter, you know, to engage with the community about what changes are necessary to the development regulations. What's, what's appropriate? What's worth talking about some more? And then finally, this, this document makes some recommendations. It's a start. It's an opening. It's an opportunity for people to hear what we are thinking about. We're coming in from the outside. We're looking at this with, you know, our experience in mind. We're looking for best practice. We're looking for legal sufficiency. And then we're integrating the, the things that we're hearing from the community. So it's, it's a good document in that regard. I mentioned recommendations. They're organized into seven different groups. And that's not to say that we've heard the final words from the community about what needs to be addressed as we move forward. But it's a starting point for us. Make the, make the U D O easy to use. Make it so that there's, there's pictures in it, so that I can understand what, what's, what's written here. Obviously rural character and implementing the policy guidance that's in place. You know, modernize and expand our uses, protect the environment, bring us more housing choices, but bring it in ways that are consistent with the character that we want here. And make sure that the development that we do get, you know, is high-quality development. That's, that's what we want. So those are some of the, the kind of thematic overview to the recommendations. In terms of next steps, we have given the draft of this to your staff. They are in the process of reviewing it. We'll revise it based on their comments. We'll release this to the public and we'll begin the discussion about the code diagnosis with the larger community. We'll start that with a summary video, maybe five, maybe 10 minutes, something that somebody can just go look at it there convenience, learn a little bit more about what's in here and make a decision. I want to go and read more myself or I, I'm happy with what you've given me thus far. We'll be conducting a, at least one, if not a series of virtual discussions with the steering committee, perhaps with this board, if that's something that you guys would like to do. We will also be setting up an informational table at Mills River Day so that people can learn more about the project, find out how to get a copy of this, share input if there's, if they so desire. But just to provide information for folks who are interested. So that's really kind of where we are, still very much early on in the process, but we're starting to get a handle on some of the hot-button issues and the things that really need to be addressed. And that is set down for you in this document, which we hope to have before you guys in the next few weeks. And I'm happy to attempt to answer any questions you guys might have.
Questions? Questions? Go ahead. No, yeah, absolutely.
Like, well, we said you were, so what is the code diagnosis do? Saying you're doing it based off of like legal or you're, you're, you're making sure that we're current?
Yes.
Are we thinking about, like, are we doing it based off of this new Senate Bill 382? Or are we doing it, we're not thinking about that, we're thinking?
What a fantastic question. How long do you have? So as you know, 382 is still very much in play. Okay? We do have Session Law 202457, which is the law of the land, which says we have to have consent to downzone. That's what we're operating under. We also know that there's a repeal bill and 18, no fewer than 18 exemption bills, two of which are for Henderson County. And so the future is uncertain for us with respect to how do we navigate 382, and the dust hasn't settled. The first pivotal date for us as a, as a community, as a consultant about whether we're going to fish or cut bait with respect to 382 is what's called crossover. Okay? In May, the bills will have needed to pass one of the chambers of the General Assembly, either the House or the Senate, depending upon where the bill was filed. Okay? If the repeal bill makes crossover, then we're still live here. And we've got a potential to maybe not worry about 382. If one of your exemption bills makes crossover, then that's a possibility for us. The exemption bills that are, that pertain to Henderson County are constrained somewhat, more so than perhaps some of the other bills that are out there. But nonetheless, we'll know in May, are those bills live or are we going to need to accommodate 382 in its current form? So we just don't know the answer to that question. This is outside of our control. It's outside of everybody's control. We're hopeful. We're doing everything we can on our side to advocate for repeal of this bill. At the same time, it's out of our hands. So our hope is to work on the parts of this ordinance that are, don't have anything to do with 382. Better procedures, more definitions, more clarity about the standards that aren't going to impact 382. And one thing I want to be sure that you understand, just because 382 has been passed, doesn't mean that we're done. Okay, we can still write new districts. We can still apply development standards to vacant properties. Okay, as long as we don't lower densities, as long as we don't remove permitted uses, and as long as we don't create non-conforming, existing, non-residential development, we're fine. We can do, we can raise potential, right? We can have incentives. We can use conditional zoning. We can do all of these things. We also have some theories about how we navigate a 382 environment. And if and when we need to start discussing those theories, then we're happy to to start having that conversation. So in answer to your question, I'll borrow a phrase from your manager, it depends. We absolutely will be improving this ordinance. If 382 is still with us, when it's time for us to begin to draft those parts of the regulations, we will help you overcome them. The cure may not be as, as tasty as we would like it to be, but we will, we will overcome the limitations and put Mills River in the best possible position that we can legally. And that's our pleasure to you.
Looked at U D O today from another town, and it's exactly what you're describing. It's exactly like the example you showed. And it really does make things a lot clearer, easier to understand.
Question I got asked off the street, or y'all, y'all probably don't come here.
I'm sorry, say.
I've been asked on the street, the person writing your U D O, is it a privately owned company?
Yes. You're looking at the people who write the code.
I just got cameras. I'm trying to answer public.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I, I have been writing development codes. I started writing development codes in 2003. And this is my 32nd or 33rd development code that I've had pleasure writing in my career.
What else I got? When do we expect to see y'all again?
Gosh.
If you're a guest.
For the annotated outline is, is, so you'll see us digitally probably in about a month. Just a little bit more in person, May, June? We want to, we're trying to kind of, we're watching this crossover date. And so we want to time our next visit with you when we've actually got something to say. Our next visit, we would very much like to have with you a work session where we could sit and and ask some questions and have some time together, an hour, hour and a half, something like that. If, if y'all's schedule will permit and yet you're willing to do that. And we'll share with you the refined recommendations that flow from this code diagnosis and the directions that we'd like to consider as we move forward in either a 382 environment or hopefully a non-382 environment.
I will say that this community is probably much like other communities that, you know, we're going to get more public involvement as if they hear anything that they do not like versus the stuff that they are liking.
Right.
So I think everyone just needs to spread the word to get as much input into y'all's database as we can so we can get this done as close to right the first time as possible.
Thank you. We agree.
Okay. Anybody even got anything else? All right. We thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Y'all be safe in your travels.
Thank you.
All right, be potential future agenda items. Bring anything to the table.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just a quick minute. Two items that have been discussed prior. One was a FEMA update. And then also one, Councilmember Cantrell asked a question at the last meeting regarding the Meadow. And I know I provided that update with council in a weekly report, but I just wanted to reiterate. I, I believe that those two questions in general go together for a FEMA update that I'm providing for you all with during the budget retreat coming into next week. But generally speaking, with Councilmember Cantrell's question around the Meadow and planting, the contract that's a part that we've signed with soil and water essentially has a, for lack of a better term, an act of God clause in there that if it gets washed away or something. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not, we're going to abandon it. Obviously, we, we care very much greatly about that area and the beautification of that area. But I just want to make sure, that's why you don't see a presentation before you now. I'm going to rope that into a bigger conversation around where we are with FEMA projects next week.
Okay. Could you possibly get us an update from the county as to the tower situation on Ford Mountain? I know the equipment was ordered. I just wondered if it's here, if anybody's heard anything you can bring up forward at a later date. We've got money in the deal, so I'd just like to keep our community advised of where we're at with it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to. I will say, generally speaking, I believe that there is movement on that sooner rather than later on that, but I can provide a greater update for you all soon.
That'd be good. Anything else?
I brought up with Matt, I'd like to discuss further like a moratorium on floodland bill that we worked through some of this. Started asking some legal questions to see if it's possible.
If that's counsel's will, I'm happy to. I will tell you, generally speaking, again, for all the cameras, I'm not a lawyer. But generally speaking, there are options and opportunities for that. Because of it, we could not, we would have to have the public hearing section. But again, if that's counsel's will, then I'll work with our staff to draft up something and bring it forward at an upcoming meeting. And if, if that is the will of counsel, I would recommend that we actually move that to the next meeting for discussion because, because it's March 13th. And if, and, you know, I would just say coupling that with a potential conversation on a floodplain ordinance, which we've already drafted a model ordinance for consideration, wasn't quite ready for this week. But if that, we're going to have the conversation about the, about a moratorium, I would actually recommend we couple those conversations together at the March 13th meeting.
Okay, I will not be here for the March 13th. But y'all can handle it. Soon, the better. Okay, so we still going into this closed session pursuant to personal discussion? Inviting anybody other than our town manager? Okay. We'll have Matt with us.
So I second Shannon's motion.
You're, you'll be free to go as well if you.